Good morning, everybody. This is June 12th, 2020. And I will start, as always, by reading our vision statement. The Ashland Public Schools cultivates the academic and social emotional growth of each student through a supportive collaborative innovative and challenging environment. Students will develop into self motivated resilient lifelong learners who embrace their role as responsible contributors to a global community. This meeting is being recorded by WACA Cable TV. Our order of business this morning after our call to order is going to be a motion to go into executive session. We'll be moving to enter into executive session under section 21A2 to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions Ashland Educators Association, teacher contract, Ashland Educators Association Nurses Unit, Ashland Educators Association Unit B, Educational Support Personnel, and Ashland Secretaries Unit, or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, and three, to conduct strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares, and not to return to open session. Ashland Educators Association Teachers Contract, Ashland Educators Association Nurses Unit, Ashland Educators Association Unit B, Educational Support Personnel, and Ashland Secretaries Unit, and to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel Dr. Michael Kyra and Ms. Claudia Bennett, with the intent of returning to open session. When we return, we will be enacting policy BGF, Suspension of Policies. I'll have a discussion and a vote on that. Suspending Policy CDB, Central Office Administrator Search Process for Assistant Superintendent, recommendation and appointment of Assistant Superintendent Dr. Michael Kyra, and then we will adjourn. Is everybody okay with that order of business? I will do a roll call to see if all school committee members are here. Erin Williams?
Yes.
And you're okay with the order of business?
I am. Lori, are we thinking that this is going to be in excess of an hour?
Um, it's hard to say, Erin. Sometimes we go into executive session and we think it's going to be just a quick, you know, few minutes. And I know that other times we've been there for a long time. And I think it's really hard to say.
Okay, I may, I have a hard stop at 11:00. So I just want that reflected that like if I'm not, when we return to open session and I'm not there, that's why I can't get, I moved my 10, but I can't move my 11.
Okay, we'll keep your time in mind. Paul Kendall?
Here, and yes, it's fine.
Thank you. Mark Terry?
You're also fine with the proceedings.
Kathy Bates?
Yes, here. I'm also fine with proceedings.
Okay, and also I will say that, well, I don't have on the agenda a slot for public comment. At the chair's discretion, I will allow comments today. I will ask that the comments be limited to per policy, to no longer than three minutes if you're here today to offer some comments, and we'll talk more about that when we return. So now I am making a motion to enter into executive session and I'm, we'll do, and I need a second, please.
Second?
I'll second.
And then roll call vote. Mark Terry?
Yes.
Kathy Bates?
Yes.
Erin Williams?
Yes.
Paul Kendall?
Yes.
And it's a yes for me, so we will head over there and we will return when our discussion is complete. Thank you. To discuss agenda item enact policy BGF, Suspension of Policies. Suspension of Policies CDB, Central Office Administrator Search Process for Assistant Superintendent. So Jim, I'll give you the floor on that.
Okay, can you hear me okay? Because I switched over to the headphones. Okay. Is that better, Mark, than not just?
Yeah, perfect. Thanks, Jim.
You're welcome. So we have a couple issues here at hand with regard to policies. One is CDB, which is our Central Office Administrator Search Process, which relates not just to an assistant superintendent, but a couple other positions within the central office. And because I am asking for an appointment without going through this process, we need to enact our policy BGF, which is a suspension of policies, which relates to any policy that we have written as a school community or school committee has for policy, as long as it doesn't relate specifically to mass general law, which a organization of a search process does not fall under mass general law. The appointment position does, which we're not suspending, obviously. So you first need to use policy BGF to suspend policy CDB, Central Office Administrator Search Process, if we want to go forward with any conversation.
Thank you, Jim. So before the committee gets into discussion and vote on that, I did want to take this opportunity for public comment. And I'm not sure if there's anybody here who wants to participate in the public comment period, but if there is, if you could please either raise your hand through Zoom or in a way that I can see you, and I will call on you to offer your comments. Let's see.
There's, I saw one.
Yeah.
Renee Thompson.
Where are you?
I think you can unmute.
I can pay.
Okay, there you are. Hi, see you. Thank you. Hi. Please feel free to offer your comment. I know Zoom is a little awkward, but this is your opportunity.
We were born with Zoom. That's what we're using for a quarter now. So with regards to the appointments that have been put to the table, and of course, in light of the world, right? That everybody's looking at everything from top to bottom, you know, frontwards and backwards. I understand, at least I believe I understand why we're having this conversation, but the, it's not about favoritism or anything like that. The ultimate goal here is to do the best for the schools. And the two people that are, have been chosen or, you know, nominated to be in these positions have more than proved their worthiness for their positions and this town as a whole. Now, that said, I get what we have here, right? We want to be inclusive of everybody. We want to just flip everything up and make sure that we're doing it the right way. And the timing of this, of course, you know, in a sense, couldn't have been any worse, right? If this happens three months ago, there's, there's no, I don't believe there's a question. But in light of where we are and where we currently stand as a, as a, as a country, right? And more specifically, as a, as a community here of Ashland, I don't see any problem in making sure that our children get the best that they can get right now. You know, and, and that's firmly where I believe in that. I don't even have any kids anymore after the pandemic, right? So, and I love Ms. Claudia, that aside, you know, this is the best for our community. And the next time something like this comes up, we deal with it that way. But right now and where we're at, we don't need to delay the appointment for either one of these two outstanding people.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else?
Thank you, Renee.
I think I heard a yes somewhere. Yes, no?
I thought I did too, but. It was background.
Just background, I believe.
Okay, all right. So moving forward then, I will open up the discussion on the suspension of the policy to the committee. Who would like to start?
I would say let's start.
Erin?
She has more.
Yes, Erin has a time constraint, so I, please, Erin.
I apologize, I can't. I have a CIO meeting at 11:00 and I can't move it. But I'm choked up because Renee, thank you so much for your statement. You, what you just said is exactly the internal argument in my head I've been having for 48 hours. I take my role as a school committee member seriously, but I take my role as an ally and anti-racist and partnership in fixing this problem more seriously and to, and exactly what you said, to have this in front of us right now, it's much different than it would have been three months ago. That said, when we think of the needs of our kids with, and Paul shared the sentiment with me, and I think it is true, the urgency of COVID and the impact to the curriculum for the fall is the most pressing issue for them. And in that vein, suspending the policy for me, I understand because of the, the negative impact to our children in that role. And again, Mike and Claudia have proven themselves immensely throughout their careers in Ashland, but it is such an internal struggle to just to suspend a policy. But I do feel like with two weeks of Paul Vera's presence here, that is critical for a good transition. We also, promotion from within is not necessarily a negative. Most corporations do this because we put time and investment into people. And we are making strides, we started four years ago, in really focusing on our diversity. And we've made huge strides and any other next position, like you said, Renee, we are diving in 100%. And so that's my comments on it. Sorry for being choked up.
Thank you, Erin.
Thanks.
Who else?
Thanks, too.
Kathy?
I just want to concur. Thank you, Erin. Thank you, Renee, for your thoughts. Thank you very much for articulating it that way. Erin, thank you for articulating that way because that's, that's how I've been feeling. So thank you, Erin. So I would say I concur with, with Erin.
I guess I'll chime in next. Like probably everybody else that's been losing some sleep over the issue over the last 24 to 48 hours. I want to acknowledge the emails that we've received that particularly expressed concern about setting aside the process in light of where we are in 2020 and to June of 2020 right now. I think they raised valid concerns in the big, they really do. And you know, like Erin and Kathy, I consider myself to be fully invested in committing this district to taking steps to improve the diversity of our staff. It is something that was identified several years ago and been working on. And I know we've made progress on it. I think the piece for me that is really important right now is that when Paul Vera was hired, Mike Kyra was also a candidate. At the time, Paul Vera was deemed to be the better candidate, that's. But, you know, a decision was made at that point with an understanding that Paul was ultimately going to be looking for a superintendency at some point in time. That opportunity is now presented itself. And at that time, it was also understanding that, that Mike could be better positioned and trained to become the next person, an investment to, I think, the point that Erin referenced, corporate America. That investment has been made. If we've laid out a path four years ago of how this might play out, forgive me for getting the timeframe exactly wrong, this is probably how it would have played out. Is that Paul would have moved on when he was ready to move on to the next best opportunity. And Mike would have been developed into a position where he would be Jim's recommendation and, and a strong candidate for it, which is where we are. So I, really, from my perspective, the sentiment that, that investment, that commitment to Mike, to our process in the long term should change right now, I think is, is not appropriate. I think we should continue with the process that was set in place before. And I certainly don't mean to tip my hand in terms of how I'll be voting when we get to the actual appointment, but my view is that we have a commitment and, and to the community to increase the diversity of our staff. We can certainly do better with that. You know, we certainly have had some feedback on our statement as a whole. And, you know, I think that it's pointed out a lot of things that, you know, this is a bad, we need to take it from being a statement to being an active thing that we're really doing. And I have every confidence that every member of this school committee, every member of our staff is committed to that. And quite frankly, if they're not, they shouldn't be in the role they're in. So ultimately, I come out on this as absolutely committed to the improvements we need to make and continue to make. But I also think in this particular circumstance, as to the appointment process before the committee today, it's appropriate to set aside the policy we have, set aside the process that we have to move forward with the appointment so we can focus first and foremost on what we need to accomplish for the fall.
Lori, I'm, I'm going to step away from my other meeting. I will come back if I can, but I just wanted, recorded that my, I support the, the, those policy suspension, the new policy, and the appointment of Dr. Kyra.
Thank you, Erin.
Thanks, Erin.
Thanks, Erin.
Paul Kendall?
Yeah, so I don't want to, you know, I don't want to waste people's time repeating, but the same things that Mark and Erin and Kathy have said, you know, that there's certainly a lot of things floating around in my mind, struggles. I spoke with Jim, you know, about the timing of this and the communication just, you know, outside of the context of this, and just making sure that the optics do look like they are. And, you know, unfortunately, in this case, the situation dictates this, right? We do have an obligation to be open and honest dialogue about the current state of things, our stance on those things. I understand people feel that our statement wasn't strong enough and it didn't have an action list. But I don't know that there's a prescribed 12-step process that we can outline. If we could outline it now, we would have the solutions to everything. We don't have that. All we can do is commit to the continuous improvement of this. And it is something we've, we've talked about. And I understand people's emails where they don't maybe know the things that have been going on. That four years ago, we put it as our superintendent's goal to redo the hiring manual and include in their strategies for diversifying our staff. And we continually talk about that every year and we try and we continue to try. And that's what our statement was about, to make sure that we are willing to continue and even redouble our efforts in that, in that space. I also want to make sure that not to get ahead of ourselves to the appointment, but while the situation dictates us to have this conversation, to potentially move swifter than we normally would, I also don't feel this is a settle, right? Four years ago, you know, Mr. Kyra applied for this. He was a finalist. There was two finalists. He was a finalist. He very much qualified back then. And he's only grown since then, so I look forward to having a conversation with him about, you know, that going forward, but we're not settling. We fully believe that, and we understand that the idea of making sure that we're doing it. And I, I would, I would just make sure that people understand that what we're, what we're facing relative to COVID, in less than three months, we have to deliver meaningful standards-based curriculum in a way as yet to be determined with moving targets for regulations and guidelines. And so most of that work has to happen in the next six weeks, that same six weeks that we would be taking to undergo a search. And if we were to do that, then I believe we'd be doing a disservice to our, all of our students and our families, where we wouldn't be focusing that effort in the next six weeks. On both these topics, we need to make sure that we can, we can do right by our students. And again, I don't think we're settling. We will have, this will free up an opening in our leadership. And I think we're all committed to making sure that we do the best job we can to recruit the most qualified, the first candidates so we can further our mission that, it's not just spoken words, there are actions behind it, but we maybe, to our own disservice, don't talk about the impacts in steps we have taken or, or the results of those steps, or the fruits of those labors. But it is important to us. And, and, but I want to make sure people understand that these two people, the commitment to this town, this community, its students, they've earned these opportunities. These aren't getting, they're not even being handed to them. They've, they've, they've made the commitment. I can think of no two people who care about the community more than these two. So that's the reasons why I think we need to make sure we're doing the right by all of our students and making sure we do that. But I totally understand and agree with all of the sentiments we receive by email. And, and Renee, I respect that, I appreciate your, your comments as well.
Thank you, Paul. I will do my best not to repeat what anybody has said because I want to be respectful of everybody's time. And I agree with everything that my colleagues have said so far. And I really especially appreciate the comments from Mr. Thompson because one thing I think we're, I'll speak for myself, but probably for everybody else, is we're working on, you know, listening and learning from people of color to understand what is needed, what is wanted. And suspending a process is, is a big step. But for all the reasons I already stated, I think it's necessary. And what I can add to this conversation is that I was part of the search committee when Mike Kyra came through and we hired Paul Vera. And I can tell you for sure that diversity of applicants was a priority then. We did have some diverse applicants. I sat there with the same heart for the situation that I have right now, where I'm thinking that it is a huge priority and it is of the utmost importance. And still, the top finalists in that situation were Paul Vera and Mike Kyra. I sat on another search committee recently, same thing. And all the while, knowing that we've made it a goal for Mr. Adams to put some effort in to get more diverse candidates. I know that steps have been taken to get those applicants. I know that in some cases applicants have shown up and in some cases they haven't. But to, to go through a process that really, in my mind, already occurred. Mike was a finalist for this very position not too long ago. And again, I sat there and elevated him to that point with the hope that I could find a diverse candidate that would have been appropriate at the time, and that didn't happen. In the meantime, you know, Mike has been working in our district, understanding how we operate, learning his job, knowing the players, dedicating himself to our community. And as seriously as I'm taking, you know, the, the current situation, we got lots of emails about go out and do a search and find a candidate of color. I hear that. I want to bring more of that into our system, and that's a goal. But I don't think that the right thing to do is to put people aside that are qualified, that have proven themselves. And then in Mike's case, and I sat there, already went through the whole process and was compared against all the other candidates that showed up and was elevated to someone who could be considered for the position and has even more experience as we sit here today. So for that and all the other reasons already stated, which I wholeheartedly agree with, and also really support and respect the fact that my, and one reason why I continue to stay on the school committee is because I work with colleagues who care about doing the right thing and, and an administration who cares about doing the right thing. And we were moved by all of the input and we are on the page. Most of us didn't sleep last night because we want to do what's right. But in this case, I think what's right is to suspend the search. In my experience, Dr. Kyra has been vetted and has had four years to prove himself since. We have all these other things going on and I'm in favor of voting to suspend that policy. Does anybody else want to add to that or make a motion?
There's one, one just other comment that I think is worth making. And that is just, you know, there's some folks suggesting the idea of, well, have an interim appointment, then do a complete process. And I think it's important to sort of speak to that just briefly.
I agree.
At least in my view, forgive me, my dog is coming around the corner here, so I hope there's no barking. In my view, particularly in the assistant superintendent's role, and I think this is also certainly true at the building principal level, but kind of restrict my comments to the superintendent's role, assistant superintendent's role, because that's our appointment. This need for stability, to be able to carry out leadership, to get buy-in from staff is really important. If we make interim appointments at any level, it's very easy for others to just say, well, we don't know whether we should go in this direction that the person's trying to lead us in, because it might all change a year from now. And I think that is an inhibition to the progress that we can make as a district over the next year. And so, you know, from my, from my perspective, although I appreciate that as an option, an alternative to making a permanent appointment at this time, my view is that we should go forward with the permanent appointment because that's really how the work's going to be done, through that leadership and stability. So I just wanted to speak to that. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. I have the same concerns about having an interim position under these circumstances. If it's somebody not as well-known to the district or other circumstances, I could understand the need. But I don't think it serves a purpose here other than to add another year, you know, possible instability.
Yeah, and thanks for bringing that up, Mark. I think the other component of that is, you know, you also use those, those tools when you're like, okay, let's see if they can. And I don't think there's a question here about capability. And I also don't, I never want to go into a process with, and then have it be disingenuous. I don't want to construct, conduct a search that, you know, I'm almost certain we're not going to find someone that I would, you know, that has, is more qualified to the extent where the other, other things that they, that these, that particularly Mike can bring to the table, because as you said, that's our realm. And so I just would feel like, if it's, I don't want to enter into a process that's, that's in some ways disingenuous when the outcome's predetermined. I think that would only perpetuate some of the, the negative challenges we're talking about. And so I'd rather focus our efforts on the position that would be opened up by all of us and do that in earnest, rather than go through what I would perceive as, and I think others would probably perceive as a somewhat disingenuous process, just because we put an interim tag on.
Thanks, Paul. Anybody else want to chime in? Do we have a motion?
Can I get the reference on the policy letter and I'll make a motion on that, Jim?
Sure. It's policy CDB, Central Office Administrator Search Process.
I moved to set aside, sorry, suspend, I moved to suspend policy CDB regarding the search for an assistant superintendent.
I'll second it. I'll second.
All in favor, Kathy Bates?
Aye.
Mark Terry?
Aye.
Paul Kendall?
Aye.
An aye for me. Erin Williams is absent.
And just, just for reference, that did require a two-thirds vote.
Correct. Sorry.
We obviously had unanimous, but the voting members present.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying that. Yep.
Thank you, Paul. And now we can move on to the next portion, which is having our opportunity to consider Dr. Kyra for the position. So I will ask my colleagues, if you're ready, Mike, to, feel free to ask their questions for Dr. Kyra. This is the school committee appointment. The superintendent makes the recommendation, but the school committee makes the selection. So I encourage you all to ask whatever questions or concerns that you wish Dr. Kyra to address. Who wants to start?
I can go first with your one. I'll ask probably the obvious one. So, so welcome. Odd to call you Mr. or Dr. Kyra when I call you Mike all the time, but you obviously went through this problem. But you obviously went through this prob- with the process four years ago. And you were a finalist at that point. And, you know, can you just talk to us about how you've grown and, you know, why you believe that you're even better prepared to take over that position and do a, do a good job at this point? And, and what's, what's different and what's changed over those four years that has made you better prepared now?
Thank you, Paul. I think the most important thing that has happened in the last four years, I've had the opportunity to work alongside a tremendous team of individuals in leadership positions at, in the Ashland Public Schools. Every day I'm afforded the opportunity to learn from true professionals. And that includes our principals, our director of student services, Dr. Vieira, Mr. Adams and, and Mrs. Durant. And, and the collaborative environment that Superintendent Adams has created and the cohesion among our team is, is incredible. So every day I learn something new. I think the process that we've gone through here in the last two years, when we talk about the, the study at the Mendez Elementary School and we talk about the unification project that we're working on here, having the opportunity to speak with someone like Maureen Cohen and learn from her during that process was absolutely tremendous. The, the knowledge that she has and, and what she shared about the processes and procedures is something I so appreciate. I feel like just the experience of being in a different building other than the Warren School. I was at Warren for the first four years and then having the opportunity to get to know a new set of teachers in a different school and a new environment has allowed me to grow. And I cannot, I cannot end this by, by not giving credit to Mrs. Bennett for teaching me as well. I mean, Claudia Bennett has been a terrific partner and I've learned a lot from her. And, and, and I, I think it's about relationships in Ashland. And I've learned so much from the people that I've had the ability to work alongside. So I, I, that opportunity to grow along with finishing my doctoral studies at, at Boston College, took some tremendous courses there and had a cohort of individuals from across, from across New England to be able to learn from and grow with. And I think folks know that social justice is a, is a, is a particular focus of Boston College. And it was a particular focus of the program that I was a part of. And I learned a great deal about the importance of social justice during my studies. And I feel like I was able to grow from and learn from several individuals who have become confidants and, and colleagues that I count on and talk to regularly.
Thanks, Mike. Who's next?
I, I can go next if that's all right.
Of course.
Thanks, Mike. I'm glad you brought up social justice. On a personal note, myself, I went to College of the Holy Cross and that's men and women for others. So on a personal note, I, you know, I too value the social justice. So it does bring me to my question or just a comment or, so in light of recent, recent things going on in the, you know, the two weeks with George Floyd. And it does bring me back to a question we've had before. And I, I think, you know, I'd like to see this, this school committee, you know, add this to an agenda soon. But I, you know, I'm thinking about the curriculum. So if, if, if we do approve this appointment, you will be, that will be your role, Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum. So, you know, are you open to, you know, reviewing the curriculum, looking at it more deeply, you know, from K through 12? So that, that, I guess that's my question.
The, the easy answer to that question is of course, and yes, I, I think.
And how would you, I guess, maybe?
I, I think that if I'm allowed the opportunity to take on this role, there are going to be three major issues and some are sort of combined. But one is to continue with what's happening at the elementary level in terms of our literacy programming. One is to promote quality, high quality and rigorous remote instruction. And the third is that we as a district need to take a close look at how we are teaching anti-racist education. This is something that we need to focus on as a district. We need to focus on offering professional development opportunities for our teachers, for our administrators, for every member of our staff to ensure that everyone truly understands what it means to be anti-racist. I think there are incredible instructors out there and, and many people who can come in and help us to grow in this area. Now, being anti-racist doesn't happen overnight. This is going to be, teaching people, this is going to be a challenge. And we have to be willing to undertake difficult conversations. And we have to be willing to truly reflect on our practices and how we teach. Little things have been done in the course of the last eight years, but it has not been enough. And I think acknowledging that is also part of the issue. We have, we have much work to do, but I, I know that that will be a commitment that I will make. And I, I know for a fact that that's a commitment of Mr. Adams and the entire administrative team here. And I'm, I just feel fortunate and lucky to be considered, to be able to have the opportunity to help and work alongside all of these folks to help make this happen. I think starting with looking at what we are teaching, how we are teaching it, and whether or not there is a true focus on diversity, inclusiveness. And, you know, I, I use the term a lot, love, loving all. So I, that's, that to me is, has to be recognized.
Thanks, Mike.
Yes, Kathy?
I am, thank you. Thanks.
Laurie, all right, if I go next?
Absolutely.
Mike, I think I have a couple of questions for you. My first one is, I think you've been the district now seven years, give or take. I think you've had an opportunity in that time to work under really two or three, depending on how you look at people who've done your job. I think you were there for a brief time when Rich Lind was in the role. You also had a time when, when Jim was filling the role himself and obviously over the last several years. And I'm curious if you can speak to sort of what you've taken from those other folks that you hope to carry forward in your work in the role, if you're appointed, as well as what you hope to bring that's different?
Sure. So in, in my eight years here, I started with Dr. Kathy Stickney. And she was the assistant superintendent my, my first year here. And one thing she certainly taught me was the extreme importance of early childhood education. I was a brand-new K to two principal. And I had never served in a capacity with students so young. And from Kathy, she, she spent time with me about the importance of early literacy instruction. And we spent a great deal of meeting time discussing that. And I really appreciated the opportunity to learn from Kathy. Rich was a tremendous advocate for all kids. And he, he and I had fantastic conversations about ensuring that we were make, that we were offering opportunities for all students, specifically in the area of interventions. And, you know, during that time, we had started processes where we had students working to make sure everyone was getting what they needed at that, at the proper time and place. We put some response to intervention practices in place and I, I certainly learned a great deal from him. I, I would say that I've learned the most from Paul. You know, we've worked together now for four years. Paul has shown me the true importance of being visible and being available. And he has a true commitment to processes and procedures. And the importance of taking things from a beginning to a finish and allowing all voices to be heard, specifically the voices of the teachers who play the most pivotal role in the decision-making when it comes to curriculum decisions. Paul listens to his, his teachers a great deal. He listens to the administrators and he works collaboratively with the folks to put plans in place. When, when he came here, he met with me and we talked about what the elementary schools needed. And that conversation was heard and we have helped to put some wonderful programs in place. And based on that interaction, I think one of the very first things I'll do if, if appointed is sit down with Kelly and Dave and Pete and Sarah and say, what do we need? What do you need to help push your particular school to the next level? And how can I be of support to help make that happen? And how can I collaborate with you to make that happen?
If I can, and thank, thanks, Mike. One more. This one might be a little bit of a difficult question, but I'm sure as a building principal over several years, either here or in your prior districts, I think you were an assistant principal. I'm sure you've had times where you've had conflict with, with staff members, whether they're peers in other buildings or what have you. And, you know, you're going to be in a, in a district-wide role. You're going to be collaborating with a lot of different people. And want to be just sort of speak to how you manage conflict and how you, whether you think that changes in this role or not?
I, I think it's difficult to be in a leadership position for eight years and not have conflict. I, I, and there certainly has been. And I, I certainly have flaws and have made some mistakes along the way. I believe that I have grown because of the conflicts that I've had and some of the mistakes that I've made as a better leader. And when I think about some of the conflicts, I, I think I'll probably make her laugh right now. But Kathy Silva and I have, have butted heads on a number of occasions. And, and what I value in our relationship and what I believe that I personally can bring to any kind of conflict is the ability to, after a conflict, either give the person a hug the next day when I see them or ask about their family and truly mean it. I, I, I do not believe that I take things personally. I believe that I, I'm able to have conflict that's healthy and that can bring out about resolution. I think that Claudia will tell you that the two of us have not seen eye to eye on certain occasions, but we do so respectfully and we do so behind closed doors. And we make sure that you have those conversations to, to ensure that everybody feels heard and everybody feels recognized. And I'm sure that there's going to be more conflicts that I'll have to encounter. And I, and I know that I will do my best to make sure folks feel listened to, that folks feel appreciated and that I will do my best to always make sure that they're handled with professionalism.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Laurie.
Thank you. Mike, I know that you're not in the position yet, but have you thought about, we're talking a lot about remote learning and, and we don't know exactly how the fall's going to look for that. But in terms of professional development, not just in terms of like what's going on right now with racial tension or politically, but also just with how to be effective remote learning teachers. Have, do you have any ideas about what you might do with a, with, is professional development even possible when you can't get everybody together? And if it is, what are some of the thoughts that you have about how we can best prepare our teachers for what might be a, a new normal for a little while?
Absolutely. I, I, I will sort of focus right now on the, the piece of professional development regarding remote learning because there are certainly a great deal of other professional development opportunities that we are going to need to undertake specifically in the area of cultural responsiveness. But I have thought a lot about this. I'm, I'm, I'm quite passionate about professional development. I, I really feel strongly about it. It was one of the aspects of my dissertation. And in terms of PD, the most important thing is that it's relevant for staff in that we make it meaningful for them. And while we don't have clear direction just yet of exactly where we're going, we need to look within because we have some incredibly talented individuals in our school system that can help promote remote learning and bring us to where we need to be. We need to be able to have conversations with technology, our technology director. Paul Kopfiter and I have a fantastic relationship and he would be one of the very first people I have a conversation with about what does he think we need to ensure everybody is set up for success? And then there are so many talented teachers and administrators when it comes to technology integration. And at the Mendez School, which I know better than the other buildings, we would have to lean on people like Claudia. We'd have to lean on people like Carolyn Bro. Get people from the high school like Chad McGowan. And ask those three individuals, among others, who are very talented in the area of technology integration, to sit and talk to us about how we can utilize certain remote platforms to ensure all student needs are met. And I think we need to teach not only our teachers, but we also should probably think about how we can offer some professional development opportunities to help them as they navigate the, the world of remote learning. So the first step I think is, is seeing who has what strengths and what talents of the, of the members of our current staff and how we can get together and plan PD that will help staff become more comfortable and ultimately experts in being able to provide rigorous remote learning opportunities for, for our students. I think it will be challenging, but I also think that if you're doing something like remote learning, how better to promote remote learning PD than remotely? Folks can have the actual experience of what it would look like because we do better when we're learning about what is happening while we're doing it.
Thank you, Mike. Any other questions for Mike?
Laurie, I had another one. Mark almost stole it, but I think it's different enough for, maybe time, enough time's gone by since he asked it. Mike, you're going to, if, if we appoint you, you're going to be transitioning internally, taking the position where your professional relationship has to change with, you know, you know, based on a relationship you've already established in your current position. And so if you talked about, have you thought about that and how you might make that transition? You know, you're, you're, have a certain relationship, say with the building principals now as a peer. And now you're taking on a new role and being, and just being sensitive to that transition and how, how you may go about addressing any, any concerns or, or trend of that transition?
I, I definitely have thought about that. And I think there's a person who I'll be able to look to for some great advice about that in Mr. Adams. He did it, he did it so well. And he went from being a principal to a superintendent and he made the transition with grace. And I will certainly ask Jim about that process and talk to him about how he made that happen so successfully. Beyond that, we have such a professional group of leaders in our administrative team that I do not doubt for a moment that we will not be able to do that successfully. When I think about Sarah, Pete, Dave, Kelly and Claudia, I think that we have a group of principals that share common values. They always put students first and they are just incredibly professional. And I am sure that we will probably have to have difficult conversations. But I know that we will be, I am confident, I should say, that we will be able to have those conversations and still maintain our relationship because our relationships are based on trust and our relationships are based on professionalism and shared values. So it, it, it could be challenging at times, but I, I am truly confident that we'll be able to make this happen successfully.
Thank you. Any further questions? Concerns? Comments? Anybody?
Maybe, you know, I was not sure whether, Mike, you you wanted to speak, because, you know, leading up to our conversation right now, we had a good dialogue about the suspension of our normal process to hire this position. And so I don't know, if I'd be interested in hearing your thoughts on, you know, on us doing that and our approach to that and and how you feel about, you know, because you're essentially, you know, the object, if you will, I don't know, couldn't come up with a better word, but of of that suspension, you know, we're doing that, and and it impacts you, it impacts people's perception of you, it impacts, you know, this transition that occurs. So I don't know if you have any thoughts on that you want to share.
Sure. You know, most importantly, I I I just want to thank Mr. Adams for having the faith in me to even recommend me for this position, and then that you all would be willing to put and suspend that process, knowing that there are some tensions going on right now in society. And that for eight for eight years, I have I've learned to truly love this community. It is just a community that I'm passionate about. So passionate about it that I decided to move my family here, and I appreciate that you have the faith in me and 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 my role as principal for the last eight years, and it would allow even the opportunity for me to continue some of what we've started here and to offer some continuity for the district by by appointing me. I understand that that's a huge deal. It's not lost on me at all, and I I appreciated hearing from Renee. And I appreciated the conversation that you all had. I personally feel that I'm ready. I feel that I I know that I will not let this district down and that I will work my hardest to do everything I can to provide our students and teachers with an opportunity to succeed. And I have a commitment to not only this district, but to also improving upon what we've already started and working towards a more culturally responsive and culturally proficient curriculum and making sure that our staff is more culturally responsive and culturally proficient in. So I I don't have a whole lot more to add besides the fact that I'm humbled to be offered the opportunity or to be recommended, and that you would consider suspending that to allow us to continue on the path that we're on right now.
Anything else? Anybody else?
I don't know. We haven't heard from Mr. Adams at all as to why he's made his recommendation. Yeah, he's showing his.
He's still here.
He's there.
He's just listening.
But it certainly seems appropriate for to hear from the person recommending for the position as to why he's doing that. I think of any dialogue.
Sure.
Yeah, thanks, Mark, and and the school committee for really good dialogue, and I and I appreciate the thoughtfulness with which you take your role seriously, and and when Paul, you know, I'll start there. You know, when when Paul was looking for superintendencies, I certainly am a strong advocate for our our leadership team to I'll put my video on. I I think a lot about our leadership team, and and my job as superintendent, my job as a principal, was to get folks ready to take on that next role, to to be a leader. And we talk a lot about in in education and our own professional development as leaders, that that our job is to to get the folks ready inside our district, our teacher leaders, to move them into leadership roles, to work hard at developing talent and and promoting talent. And I am a firm believer in that, and and as someone who, again, grew up in the private sector originally, that was that was the norm for us, and it's not necessarily the norm in public education. But I think it's become something that we have valued here in Ashland. I I value that my principals or my assistant principals endeavor to be the next leader of a building or the next leader of a district. And so when when Paul was looking and and four years later, you know, that was a hard conversation I had with Michael, and he'll tell you that four years ago, when, you know, I didn't think he was ready at that time. And through his coursework at B C and and the growth that he's had through Warren and as well as at Mendez and making some really tough decisions, not always, and I'm the same, the first person to admit, for me, too, we don't always get it right, but we're reflective. We're reflective of what we can do better. And Michael has done that, and for me, this is a natural progression. Mark, it goes back to your point. We've worked hard, we've invested, we've trained, we've mentored. There's still, I'll be clear, I've said this to Mike before I even put his name before you, there's still a lot of mentoring that needs to occur. And and I'm looking forward to that opportunity, should you so choose to approve my my recommendation. He's got the requisite skills. He's got the passion for the community. It's not, you know, a quick decision on my part. This is something I've worked with him for the last, you know, four years to prepare him for the next level of leadership. And and I know he's a great fit with it within our own leadership team. I spoke with all of our leadership team before I came to the school committee to see how they felt about this. And yes, it's a different relationship with your building principals. And that's a that was a great question, Paul, because absolutely it changes. It doesn't mean, you know, there are going to be times where it's now about no versus the text chain of of all the principals together saying, no, what's going on with Jim? Why is he making this decision? And he's no longer going to be a part of that. He's gonna, he's gonna be, he's gonna be a part of it, but it might be in a different you know, lens, to be honest. And that's something we will learn together, and we will grow together. But the initiatives that we've created, the work that we need to do in this district, I have the utmost confidence, you know, in Mike and his ability to perform the role, perform it very well, and, in my opinion, getting him ready for the next part of his career. And I'm not saying I want that to be in a year or two years or five years or whatever it is, but it's, again, I view it as my role to get him ready. And but I've seen tremendous growth in him, and I know that the work that we have ahead of us, and a lot of it has to do with, obviously, elementary education. It's a skill set that I've learned, that it's not my bailiwick. I was a high school teacher. I was a high school administrator. I've learned a lot about elementary education. But it, you know, and Paul will tell you, that's the first thing he had to learn coming into the role. And I can at least be a great advocate and supporter of of the middle and high, because that's my my role. Having a a an assistant and taking nothing away from Paul, but that has this background, will do Ashland well, right? It it will be a great service for us. So that's why I'm recommending him for this position. I believe he's ready. He's not only earned it, but he has the skills that are necessary to move our district forward.
Thank you, Jim. Anybody else?
Ready for a motion?
Ready when you are.
I'll move to appoint Michael O'Kara as the next Assistant Superintendent of Bates Curriculum Instruction and Assessment as the official title.
I'll second.
Thanks, Kathy, and we'll do a roll call vote. Paul Kendall. Mark Carey.
Yes.
Kathy Bates.
Yes.
Lori Tosti, yes, and Erin's not here to vote, but she did voice her support earlier.
Congratulations, Mike.
Congratulations.
I want to be clear, pending contract negotiations.
Pending contract.
Thank you. I I think it's important to state that, because
Absolutely. You're right, Jim. Yeah.
Until it's signed on the dotted line, you are still Principal Kira.
Thank you very much. I I really appreciate your support and the opportunity.
Thank you for your service to Ashland, and we look forward to continuing to work with you. All right. Let's see.
Motion to adjourn. That's it.
Motion to adjourn. Do we have one? Okay, Paul moves, Kathy seconded, and all in favor, Paul?
Yes.
Mark?
Yep.
Kathy?
Yes.
Yes, for me. Thank you, everybody.